This must have been one of the attachments. I think this is for today.
I think so.
Because it's dated January 2nd, this would spend the most.
Okay.
It had, there's, I think that's. This is from tonight's meeting.
Okay.
I think so.
Thank you.
And then the other one. So this is the.
He said he has frogs in his throat.
Right. Got the scroll ready, Jiler?
Oh, I'm sorry. Supporting documents.
This regular meeting of the Independent School District 535 School Board is called to order at 5:31 PM on Tuesday, January 9th, 2024, in room 137 of the Edison Building. The Board acknowledges this site and all RPS sites are situated on the ancestral land of the Dakota People, and we honor the Dakota Nations and the sacred land of all Indigenous peoples. This meeting is being livestreamed, and interested members of the public are welcome and encouraged to view this meeting remotely at youtube.com backslash ISD535. Tonight's meeting is also being recorded and will be posted on our YouTube channel following completion of the meeting. If you are speaking or presenting at tonight's meeting, please speak directly into or close to the microphone provided so that the recording can capture clear audio and the audience present can hear what is being said. The agenda and documents for this meeting are available online at rochesterschools.org-backslash-simply. Present at this meeting are School Board members, Superintendent Kent Bacall, a non-voting ex officio member, and Assistant School Board Clerk Ms. Lori Sam. Ms. Sam, would you please call the roll?
Director Barlow.
Here.
Director Cook.
Here.
Director Garcia.
Here.
Director Walton.
Here.
Director Marvin.
Here.
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 At this time, we offer the opportunity to say the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Item 2.1 is approval of the agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda?
Over approval, second.
It has been moved and seconded to approve the agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The agenda has been approved. A note to the Board and community, if we're still meeting around 7 o'clock, we'll make a decision as to whether or not to take a recess for about 10 minutes around that time. Comments to the Board, item 3.1. It is important for the School Board to hear from our stakeholders regarding issues that impact our students, staff, families, and schools. We welcome communication via email, phone call, at our community engagement listening sessions, and here during comments to the Board. Members of the community who want to make comments to the Board must contact the Assistant School Board Clerk by 5 o'clock PM on Monday before a regular meeting. The purpose of comments to the Board is to give community members an opportunity to provide input directly to the School Board about issues that fall within our authority. The Board and Superintendent do not respond directly to speakers' comments during the meeting, but may follow up with the speaker if requested and appropriate. A reminder that Policy 206 and Procedure 206A set the time, place, and manner procedures and restrictions on comments to the Board. These ensure privacy protections for students and staff, and prohibit comments that are threatening, profane, lewd, vulgar, obscene, harassing, abusive, or constitute a personal attack on others. Speakers, when your name is called, please come to the table, choose a microphone to speak into, and be seated. You'll have three minutes to speak, and the timer will be displayed in front of me. Please begin your remarks by stating your name. If you have written materials for the Board, please provide them to the Assistant School Board Clerk prior to your remarks, and she will distribute them to Board members. Speaker one this evening is Alexandra Broski-Bader. Our next agenda items are in the category of reorganization of the School Board. Board members in the community, these are items that only happen at the first meeting in January every year, so if you'll bear with us as we move through some of these required items. Item 4.1 is election of officers. Minnesota Statute 123B14 specifies that School Board officers, chair, clerk, treasurer, must be elected for a one-year term as soon after January 1st is practicable. In addition, School Board Policy 202, School Board Officers specifies that a vice chair is also elected. We will now take officer nominations. Nominations do not require a second. If there is only one nomination for an office, the individual will be elected by acclamation. If there are multiple nominations for an office, a vote is required. Nominations are now in order for the Office of Chair. Director Workman.
I nominate Kathy Nathan.
Kathy Nathan is nominated. Are there any other nominations for the Office of Chair? Are there any other nominations for the Office of Chair? If there are no further nominations, nominations for the Office of Chair are closed. With only one nomination for the Office of Chair, Kathy Nathan is elected by acclamation.
Should we clap? No.
Nominations are now in order for the Office of Vice Chair. Director Marvin.
I nominate Julie Workman.
Julie Workman has been nominated. Are there any other nominations for the Office of Vice Chair? Are there any further nominations for the Office of Vice Chair? If there are no further nominations, nominations for the Office of Vice Chair are closed. With only one nomination for the Office of Vice Chair, Julie Workman is elected by acclamation. Nominations are now open for the Office of Clerk. Director Garcia.
I nominate Karen McLaughlin.
Karen McLaughlin has been nominated for the Office of Clerk. Are there any other nominations for the Office of Clerk? Are there any other nominations for the Office of Clerk? If there are no further nominations, nominations for the Office of Clerk are closed, and with only one nomination for the Office of Clerk, Karen McLaughlin is elected by acclamation. Nominations are now in order for the Office of Treasurer. Director Workman.
I nominate Jean Marvin.
Are there any other nominations for the Office of Treasurer? Are there any other nominations for the Office of Treasurer? If there are no further nominations, nominations for the Office of Treasurer are closed, and with only one nomination for the Office of Treasurer, Jean Marvin is elected by acclamation.
That was pretty contentious.
Having completed the elections, I will now read the resolution for action. Be it resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 535 elect Kathy Nathan as its chair for a term of one year effective upon election on January 9th, 2024; be it resolved that the School Board of Independent School District elect Julie Workman as its vice chair for a term of one year effective upon election on January 9th, 2024; and be it resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 535 elect Karen McLaughlin as its clerk for a term of one year effective upon election on January 9th, 2024; and be it resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 535 elect Jean Marvin as a treasurer for a term of one year effective upon election on January 9th, 2024. Motion approved?
Move approval, second.
It has been moved and seconded. All in favor of the resolution, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the resolution has been approved. Onto our next item, review of the Code of Ethics. Policy 209 Code of Ethics requires that the School Board review the policy on an annual basis. Board members, we're going to have a short discussion of one or two components of the ethics policy that you believe is important to your service on the School Board. Also, if you have any recommendations for the Policy Committee to consider in language changes or updates in reviewing its policy at the January meeting, please note them in our discussion. Anyone like to start? Director Marvin.
Yes, this is a fairly lengthy policy, but something I'm always drawn to is under Section A, number nine. It says, recognize the need, this is for School Board members, to represent all children, all parents' guardians, and all community members. And as Board members, we are elected by the community, not by a particular group, not from a particular part of the community, to represent everyone. It's an incredible privilege, and it's a daunting challenge, because it's parents' jobs, I think, to represent their children and to do what's best for their children. And it's Board members, their job to do what's best for all children. So we feel torn often. You can make a perfectly good point about what your child needs, but at the end of the day, we have to vote together to do what's best, what we believe is best, and what information tells us is best for all the kids of the district.
Director Cook.
And I'm also drawn to a section in, under heading 2A, subpoint 7, that members of the School Board will be primarily motivated by a desire to provide the best possible education for the students of my school district. I feel strongly that there are plenty of ways to disagree respectfully about the best way to pursue that, but I truly feel privileged that that is something that all of us take seriously and that we align on, that we are acting in the best interest of children and the best possible, in order to provide the best possible education for those children. So I really feel it's a privilege to be able to use that as our lodestar, and I value that.
Director Garcia.
I, I mean, a lot of them are important, but I think under Section 2A, third one, so listen to the opinions and views of others, including but not limited to other School Board members, administration, staff, students, and community members. I think I, you know, particularly moved by our speakers tonight, because I feel like I'm getting tired of them asking us to do something we're already doing, either in full or in part. But like, there's clearly a disconnect, because what we're doing is either not landing with them, or something is happening, and I would love to crack that code. And I think that also, listening to the opinions of others, doesn't just mean people showing up via email, or phone call, or in person, but that we need to be more active in engaging the community. And I know Superintendent, many of the other Board members are doing those things, and I think it's so vital to what we do, and I really do hope that we can crack that code. I mentioned it at the end of, after we came out of closed session at our last regular meeting, that we need to run some sort of survey or something about what platforms or what ways do people receive communication from us so that we can be more effective in that. So like, we need to be giving and receiving communication, I think, maybe differently than we are, because we're doing a lot of work and spinning wheels, and it doesn't always seem to be going where it needs to go.
Director McLaughlin.
I agree with what my colleagues have said, but I also, when I read through this in preparation for the meeting tonight, reflected on Section 2D, number one and number five, particularly in the last few months, thinking about our attempts to appraise and plan for not only the present, but also the future education needs of the district and the community. That's something that I hadn't really thought about as a new Board member, but as I have more years on the Board, I recognize it's not just the present, but it's also the future. And then, kind of the same thought about number five, that we're assuming responsibility for prudent financial management of the school district's budget. That I know we all rely on Mr. Carlson to provide us with great advice, and I very much appreciate his work, that I think if we didn't have people like him in the district, that's just one example of supporting us, that we would perhaps even be in more challenging situation than we have been, and I appreciate having this as part of our Code of Ethics.
Director Workman.
So I'm going to do pieces of several. The first one is Section A, number two, come to the meetings prepared for discussion, followed by listen to the opinions and views of others, including everybody who was already mentioned. Section C, number two, recognize that authority rests with the School Board in legal session, not with the individual members of the School Board, except as authorized. not with the individual members of the school board, except as authorized by law. And section C, number four, keep an open mind about how I will vote. So sometimes I get community members asking me, before we've made a decision, how are you going to vote? And my response has always been, you will know what my vote is once we vote at it at the school board table, and that I am not going to presuppose what my vote is going to be until I am convinced that I have all of the information that I need in order to make an informed vote at the table. And I'd just like to add a little aside here for to Superintendent Pikel, who I believe has been keeping us extremely well informed, and I appreciate that.
Director Barlow.
My point is closely in line with Director Workman's. Comes under section 2C5, make decisions by voting in school board meetings after all sides of debatable questions have been presented. And I think this is so important. These last several weeks have demonstrated the value of not just interaction discussion amongst board members, but from the community. And so, for those who are community members, and I should mention, we all once were, so we know what you feel like, what you go through, please know that our decisions aren't just ready-made, but they're thoughtfully made after, at least to my best knowledge, after we give consideration to all information presented.
And I'd like to focus on item B2. Remember, my responsibility is to set policy, not implement policy. And B6, delegate the implementation of the school board decisions to the superintendent. I think the fine line that I've learned, and I think in talking to my colleagues, we all learn, is between the governance and management roles of the board. And it is sometimes difficult to make a decision at the level at which we make a decision without knowing exactly what it's going to mean at every level of detail, in every building, and in every classroom. What I appreciate about the superintendent and the cabinet is that they are willing to field our questions about what does this mean, not allowing us not to make decisions blindly or without thinking it through to the end product. But in the end, whatever decisions we made, make, do have to be implemented by the superintendent and the cabinet, and our building administrators, and our teachers. And we have to have faith in the information they provide to us about the things they're thinking about, the things they're working through, and we may not have all those answers when we make our decision. But what I appreciate about this board and about their willingness to plan our work is that we allow ourselves time for monitoring of previous decisions, for looking at data that are tied to the outcomes that we want from the decisions that we make. So we never just leave a decision on the table and never, and never go back to it. We have a cycle of evaluating our work to really see if the decisions we're making are the right ones.
Board members, any other comments on the Code of Ethics? So the Code of Ethics will be formally coming back to us as a annual policy approval after our January meeting. Director Workman.
Did you?
Yes.
Okay, so in section E, number eight, it's for proper referral according to the change of command. Can we change command to communication? Because I've noted that that's the word that we've been using.
Oh, yes.
In all of our documents so far, and we'll see it again later tonight with the school board procedures for people wanting to make comments to us.
Okay. Anything else? Great. Thank you, board members. Okay, now we'll move on to school board committee assignments. So policy 213 and procedure, policy 213 and 213-1R identifies the committees and community advisory committees that school board members serve on. Some of these committees meet on a calendar year schedule and some meet on a school year schedule. School board committee assignments are reviewed twice each year, once in January, following the reorganization of the school board, and once in the summer prior to the beginning of the school year. So you see recommendations in the agenda item, and those designate the continuing assignments and the term dates for board members for committees you're currently serving on. I haven't heard anything from any board members that they would like to change their school year assignments. So really, the only committee where we need to discuss the assignments are for the policy committee. And the good news is that we have a number of people who want to serve on the policy committee. Director Workman is automatically chair of the policy committee by virtue of her role as vice chair. And the plan that we've come up with to allow Director Garcia and myself to continue to serve on the board, but also to include the interests of Director Cook and Director Barlow, is to rotate monthly who is assigned of Director Garcia, Director Barlow, and Director Cook to attend and participate in the policy committee meetings. The agendas are self-contained in terms of the policies that we, that we look at, so we'll be able, each person participating will be able to complete the review and discussion of the policies that are happening in that month. And I think it'll allow more people to have their input in the groundwork, if you will, of looking and developing the policies. And it will allow for some transition should some of us who have been serving on the policy committee for longer periods of time decide to move off and have other people take a more full-time role. So any questions or? All right, great. And then we'll review the school year policy committee assignments for the 2425 school year sometime this summer, so that we have it all in place before the school year starts. Right. Item four is review of the school district mission statement. Policy 104, school district mission statement requires the school board will review the school district's mission, vision, and goals annually, especially when members of the school board change. Rochester Public Schools' mission is to inspire, challenge, and empower all students with the knowledge and skills required to reach their full potential, to contribute to future generations, and to become involved in members of a global community. The goals of Rochester Public Schools are reflected in the Planning for Purpose Strategic Plan. The RPS strategic plan has 15 essential objectives, each of which is a building block of the world-class school system we are creating. For those of you in the room or watching online who might not have seen them, these building blocks are prominently displayed on the back wall of the boardroom, and that same graphic is available in the agenda item tonight. Board members, reading the essential objectives of the strategic plan, and then we'll open the discussion for any comments related to the annual review of the mission, vision, and goals. Director Garcia, would you start?
Do you want me to do the background information or just?
Just the first two bullets under shift systems.
We will modify funding formulas to provide schools with greater flexibility to allocate staff time and other resources in ways that meet student needs.
We will restructure school improvement processes to continually analyze and improve student outcomes.
Are we just doing two?
Yep.
Oh. Rochester School Board will review and revise policies for equity and make changes as needed to ensure that students from marginalized communities have the support they need to thrive in RPS schools. We will redesign transportation routes to increase service to early childhood programs and to enable elementary schools to begin at times that optimize learning for younger students while preserving the benefits of later start times for older students.
We will increase philanthropic support to advanced implementation of the RPS strategic plan and to promote innovation across the district. The next session, section is entitled, empower people. We will improve recruitment and retention processes to enable RPS to attack, attract, and retain talented staff, especially in hard-to-fill positions and from backgrounds that are underrepresented in our schools.
We will develop leadership capacity to equip staff at multiple levels of the school district with the knowledge, skills, and tools they need to guide the work. We will uplift youth voice and leadership so that issues that matter to our students can be articulated and addressed, and so that young people can contribute to their schools and community.
We will build post-secondary and career pathways that help all students develop a vision for life after high school and take steps to realize that vision through their progress through RPS. The next section is entitled, create community. We will enhance belonging and behavior so that all students feel accepted and safe at school.
Continuing, we will engage parents and caregivers to help families support students' academic, social, and emotional development, and we will establish strategic partnerships that enable RPS to achieve the objectives of the strategic plan, and that also advance the priorities of our partner organizations.
And taking us home, we will implement a multi-tiered system of supports to provide all students with access to a strong core curriculum and to give students who struggle the additional resources they need to succeed. We will expand and upgrade mental health services for students and staff by screening for those who need support and by expanding options for treatment. And finally, we will elevate deeper learning to provide every student with an education characterized by the three elements of deeper learning that have been identified by researchers Jalmetta and Sarah Fine, mastery, identity, and creativity.
Thank you, board members. Any specific comments regarding the mission, vision, or goals? Director McLaughlin.
I was struck at the introduction to these specific topics that, I hadn't recognized this necessarily before, but it talks about the system we are creating. I think that's really significant that, you know, we're building something new here with all of these things we talked about, and that is not lost on me, and I hope it's not lost on the community.
Director Barlow.
And for me, I, as I listened and have been reminded, these reflect, from my point of view, what we aren't about also. Not necessarily trying to reinvent or to eliminate, but to expand and continue to develop. I think sometimes, without knowing the purpose, not so much from the part of the board, but I, based on some communications we on occasion will receive, the community may not be fully aware, yet the point's been made tonight that if we think we're, if we think everyone knows what we're supposed to be doing, and we are aware of what we're supposed to be doing, and we are affirming that, there might be an opportunity there to allow the community to be more a partner in that, and a participant. So I just wanted to, you know, call that out because it's so important, you know, we can feel pretty good about these things, and we do, but we, we don't operate in a bubble. And so hopefully, as the community hears what our mission statements are, they will say, hey, these are good, sound things, and what can we do to be fully supportive of
I think it's also important to remember the extensive community engagement that went into the development of the strategic plan over an extended period of time, and that these really do reflect what our community told us, that they want RPS to focus on in order to ensure student success. But echoing Director Garcia's statements, that making sure, getting these to be successful is going to require additional community engagement, both to inform the community about how these are being implemented. And if you've been following our agendas for 2023, a lot of these topics will sound familiar to you because they've taken a lot of time at board meetings to have presentations and discussions, and that will continue in 2024 when you see our draft annual school board calendar, because you'll see a number of these topics either reappear or appear in their, in their development process. So this is really the foundation of the work that, that we're doing here as a board, and that our superintendent and our cabinet, our administrators, our buildings, are implementing, even as they, you know, teach our kids and welcome them to buildings every day and take care of their day-to-day needs, they are looking forward in this visionary fashion to implement this entire combination of, of goals. Our next agenda item is under information and outreach. Our first item is the Community Education Regional Project Award. This is an information item. Superintendent McCab.
Thank you, Chair Nathan, and it is a pleasure to ask Amy Icke, our executive director of Community Education Partnerships, to recognize some amazing colleagues who are here. There is no place in probably the world, but certainly the United States, that has more reason to be wanting to prepare young people for what are often called the building trades. We're on the cusp of development that I just heard the other day exceeds the total cost and breadth of the next top five construction projects that are going to be happening around the country. And so we need young people to be ready for all this building and all this construction. And we had an exciting project that is pointing the way with some of those knowledge, some of that knowledge and skills. So Amy, thank you for the work you did in making this possible, and we are excited to share an award that that project has recently received.
We are equally as excited to share this with you. You may have read about this project in the paper during the summer when we awarded Rochester Area Builders with the Community Educator of the Year Award for their work, and it's our turn to celebrate a bit of the project from the community outside of the world as we accepted the Outstanding Project Award for this project from the State Community Ed Association. It's my honor to share the group with you. You all have a copy of the awards booklet with you. You see in the presentation, some of the folks who were engaged in this project, these are amazing community educators, both within RPS and in our community, with great commitment to our kids. And of course, we could not have done this without our Kellogg team, Principal Angie, and our center director, Adam, and many, many, many volunteers that John and Jay brought to work with our students. I'm going to let these photos play a little bit, and we're going to hand it down to our community partners, John and Jay, to talk a little bit about their experience.
Thank you. Madam Chair, Superintendent, board members, thanks for the opportunity to talk about a great program. I was, I'm no longer the executive director of RIB. My successor was putting success in that word already.[1651.83][1651.83][laughter] Pat Sexton, raise your hand. As the executive director, I knew programs don't happen without member engagement and involvement, so when Pat said, hey, this is a great program, can you help us continue it? I said yes, mainly because I knew Jay wouldn't let me say no. So Amy approached me in August of '22 and said, hey, we should do an after-school program. And after I controlled the urge to wrap her in a bear hug, I said, sure, let's chat. So we put a curriculum together. We picked Kellogg because I know transportation is always a challenge in the schools. So we picked Kellogg because they're a three-block walk to the builder's office, and that became our job site. But we started in the classroom. We wanted to show how many people it takes to build something, and we wanted to expose the students to as many of the different careers that they could possibly move into. So we started in the classroom and did some on-hand small things. We went over job site tool safety and that type of thing, and decided to build a playhouse. So the students designed the playhouses. We broke up into three teams. It'd be in middle school, it was two teams of boys and one team of girls. And as the father of daughters, I was very excited when the girls' team won the design competition. And so then we took their draft, and one of our members actually did a blueprint of the playhouse, and then we proceeded to, to work on building that playhouse. You know, I heard community several times tonight as I was sitting in the audience, and I think if there's ever a program that demonstrates what can successfully happen when a community comes together, it's this program. Because it wasn't just the members of Rochester Area Builders. It was the team at Community Education, Community. It was our members, it was, you know, OMB Bank underwriting the cost of materials. It was Home Depot donating, you know, I just went and asked, hey, can you do some tools, thinking, you know, a hammer, maybe a tape measure, and they donated a $45 toolkit. And...
[inaudible]
For every kid.
For every kid, which was awesome. And somewhere, somebody owns the only playhouse with a, a commercial roof. Very expensive commercial roof. But, you know, talking about, Amy and I were talking about, you know, the impacts, and I asked Kirk Johnson from Schwickards, I said, why are you spending all this money on this roof? I mean, we need one because, you know, we had parapet walls, and Kirk said, I'm going to use it as a training session for a couple of my guys. So, you know, unintended consequence, it just worked out that, hey, we're going to use this to train some of my people. But I mean, we had, we had, you know, plumbers and electricians, and, and we went over budgets. Mr. Carlson will appreciate that. We had our construction budget, and they did the estimate, had to figure out, unfortunately, or happily, the curved staircase had to go away. We just couldn't quite, quite afford that. But the kids designed it, and I think you can see from the pictures, they, they built it. It wasn't Jay and I, it was the kids, the kids building it. So while the, the recognition at the state level is, is awesome, I think when Jay and I were talking about what we enjoyed about it, it was watching those kids after they had left, bring their parents back down, saying, look what we did today. And seeing the, the pride in those students was just, was just awesome. So Jay, you got anything to add?
One of the things that, when John first approached me as far as the program, he said, oh geez, middle school kids. How do you get a middle school kid to focus? And, you know, I could see 15 kids, typically in a group like that, you've got about three working and the rest watching. I was impressed. Every single kid took an interest in it, every single one of them. Not one of them was sitting at, on the side watching. They were all pounding nails, they were all listening, they all tried the power tools, they all got involved, which, again, for middle school kids, that was pretty impressive. I says, normally you don't get that. But they showed the interest. Matter of fact, I made the comment to a couple of the, of the kids working that when you're ready to, to go out into the workforce, you let me know. You could see the light go on, and how do you do that with, with middle school kids is tough. But you could see it, they were involved. And I'd say it was probably one of the most fulfilling things I've done in the trades is, is watching those kids getting involved like that.
Yeah, you know, Kyra's mom said that she's going around the house with that toolkit, saying, what do I need to fix? You know, so that's, that's, that's fun too. So it was, it was just a very rewarding program for us too, from a personal standpoint. But, you know, Superintendent, you mentioned it, we, we need electricians, we need plumbers, we need, we need everybody, especially with, you know, building the equivalent of a football stadium with, with Mayo's announcement, we definitely need a skilled workforce. CTEC is a great program. We need to feed that program. So how could we do that to help the school district? It just, it just worked really great. So I appreciate the opportunity that we had to do that. I'm looking forward to do it again. I talked to O&amp;B Bank, they're already in for supporting the, the funds, even though I told them costs went up. I stopped at Home Depot for another thing, he's already in for the toolkits again. So I mean, it's just, everybody in the industry is extremely excited about this program because we need to get those kids interested, I'm sorry, students interested early. I want to be a builder, I want to be a plumber, I want to be an electrician. So as they progress through their education, they know that I don't have to go to college, I can learn on the job and, and have a very successful career and support a family. The other added benefit was, you know, as you look to educate the students, the, the playhouses raffled off to support Family Service Rochester. So hopefully they know, keep that in the back of their minds as they grow up to, when they get somewhere and they're working somewhere, that they also have to look to see how they can support their community. So it was just, I don't know how many wins we could say about that program, so, anyway.
Quite a few.
So thank you.
My name is Josh Helferson. I'm a Youth Enrichment Coordinator with Community Ed, and I was asked to just celebrate Rochester Area Builders as adept facilitators of deeper learning, and just giving you some things to reflect on of who are we as the students in the project, what are we making, and then who are the community members who can mediate the project. From the beginning, the students were just genuinely welcomed into a community of practice. Every week, they had every person who does something in your house coming in to present and do an activity. They were trusted with power tools, they're trusted with drafting their own blueprint for a structure and coming up with this creative idea for a house within some technical constraints. In the end, they built it themselves alongside community members. The final product was, you know, donated, it raised money for people in the community. It was brought to Rochester Fest and Thursdays Downtown, and I don't know what picture's behind me, but you can see those kids triumphant, they're on top of the world and on top of the playhouse. And I think those are some things to think about, just how can members of the community facilitate this? And I think Amy included a quote, something to the effect of, if you do some theory building around deeper learning, and if you look at your schools, you're going to find these pockets where deeper learning is already happening. So I just want to thank you for celebrating this pocket and just your consideration on how to expand these things in the future. And then I was hoping we could just get a round of applause from our community for what Rochester Area Builders did. Thank you.
You reminded, you reminded me of one more success. The worst injury was a sliver.
That's good. Director Garcia.
So I can speak on the receiving end, actually. At the time that Rochester Fest and Thursdays on First was happening, I was a clinical program manager at Family Service Rochester. And a number of people who work for Family Service Rochester are either spouses or parents of someone affiliated with the school district. And so it did us good to be able to say, like, those are our kids doing that work, and be able to engage parents and other, like, middle-school-esque age kids to say, like, this is what you could or would be doing when you're in middle school. And it was such a wonderful thing. I was one of the people who was sort of standing out and, you know, having people come and, and, you know, purchase the raffle tickets for, for these houses. And this one was so impressive. I remember one kid telling his mom, like, please, like, just give me a $20 raffle ticket so I can buy this one. And she's like, you understand that you're not purchasing it for $20, like, someone else could end up getting the house. And he was just like, that's fine. And she's like, but we also have nowhere to put it. And he said, well, you don't need your backyard garden, and the dog doesn't need a dog house because he can just live in the playhouse. And so I was kind of like, I feel like that's flawless, like, argument. And they bought actually quite a few, I don't think that they were the winners of that particular house, but it was, it, so when they bring it to Rochester, Rochester Fest, or Thursdays on First, it's open as a house, so kids get to, like, come and play on it, and even in, like, the scorching heat, kids wanted to go down that slide. It was, it was just wonderful. So I really, truly thank you for all the work that you've done, because even the, the funds that helped support Family Service Rochester, which is a nonprofit, you know, community-based organization that provides mental health services to the community, that ensures that other people who maybe don't have typical or regular access to mental health services would gain them. So I feel like this was such an excellent partnership, and it was wonderful to be able to see all of the pictures of our kids here at RPS doing that, and being able to also see the community so engaged with the materials and being able to be proud that maybe some of their peers in the community were part of building that particular playhouse. So thank you so much.
Director McLaughlin.
I think this is just a fine example of the community and the schools and everybody involved working together. This is real, truly, community engagement. I so much appreciate your willingness to spend time with middle school students who maybe turned out a little bit different from what you expected. But all of the things that have been mentioned about deeper learning and all of these other things, students now have an opportunity to take what they've learned in school and see something concrete or wood in front of them. And this is just so critically important, and I hope that other people are inspired by what you all did with this. We've talked about how do we get the message out to the community? So, you know, I would, I would be thrilled if I saw an article in the front page of the Post Bulletin celebrating this, because we say, how do we let the community know? How many people are going to actually know about this? Maybe the ones who went to Thursdays on First and some other things, but, I mean, this has to be just celebrated, shouted from the rooftop, even if it's a flat-roof commercial. So thank you once again. I, it's, this is just awesome, just awesome.
Yeah, I mean, it, it does show them the importance of what they're learning in school, because you're, you're, when you're building, you know, one of our members told me once, you can't, you can't be, you know, ignorant and, and build a multimillion-dollar building. You have to, you know, so it, it shows them there's a reason why you're learning about fractions, and how, and geometry, and all these, you know, how to communicate. I mean, so it's just, it is a great way to demonstrate why you're in school.
I think the other thing is it, it gives them an opportunity to learn some life skills. Things that, whether they go into the trades or not, they're learning something that they can, and they feel confident about doing their own home repairs, doing, you know, addressing it, being able to talk the talk as far as any, any projects at the house. So I think that's, that's another thing that they learned is, again, life skills, which is really, really important.
Director Cook.
Well, yeah, I, I think referring to it as an unmitigated win and, and something to celebrate makes a lot of sense, and I doubt there'd be a whole lot of dissent to that point of view. As you look ahead to the next chapter and where this program goes from here, are there things that you can think of that the, the school district, the school board might offer in the way of support, or things that you've encountered as barriers that would be helpful to raise for us so that we can ensure that this is a program that will be able to flourish in the future?
Yeah, we, we called it a pilot program, and we started it called Kellogg, like I said, just because of locale. But the hope, and so we're, we're still tweaking it, because we asked the students, what, what did you like about the program, what didn't you like? They didn't like all the talking. You know, so we're trying to figure out more hands-on stuff. So Jay's awesome because he's the builder guy, and, you know, so we're talking about building a wall and, and doing a little bit more. So we're still tweaking the program to make the curriculum really, you know, get the kids really, really engaged. So that's one thing that we're working on, that's again why we just, you know, stayed with, with Kellogg. You know, it's, it's just trying to find job superintendents like Jay to be at John Adams, Dakota, Willow Creek, you know, to expand the program, to, to offer it to, to more students. And then, you know, I think the dream, the dream is to have industrial tech back in the curriculum at all the schools. So this is a way to, you know, demonstrate proof of concept, that there is some interest in that type of program. So, you know, eventually it'd be, it'd be great to have that, but in the meantime, we're, you know, we're willing to, to, you know, fill that, fill that need and hopefully bring students into the industry. So I think just supporting community ed and continuing, continuing that, that portion is, is really what we need at this point in time. You know, at some point, there might be some, you know, additional costs as we expand the program, you know, the, the hands-on, small item things that we do in preparation for the big, big job and, and that type of thing, but, so, yeah.
Thank you.
Director Barlow.
Two quick things. One of which you've already addressed, I was curious about the possibility of expansion into our other middle schools, you just spoke to that. But also, the additional item would be that of if there are other, be it families, individuals, businesses, organizations who would maybe want to contribute, how would they go about doing that?
Sure, they could reach out to Community Ed org. I think I can volunteer Rochester Area Builders for that call as well.
Okay, thank you.
Director McLaughlin. I may have missed this, but how did the students get connected to this program? Were they selected? Did they self-select? How did that happen?
So last year, students signed up online, just like they would with other extracurricular activities. This year, we're going to do a job application, kind of like a pretend job application, because the whole thing is framed around being on a team, so we thought that was kind of a fitting way to select students.
Awesome, thank you.
We had a, we had an immediate waiting list about the program last year, which was exciting, too sad, but exciting, because, you know, we, we couldn't, as Jay mentioned, we're not teachers. So the...
You are now.
The trepidation of dealing with middle school students, we wanted to limit it to, you know, 12 to 14 students. So I think we're, and the instructors there at Kellogg helped tremendously with that too, so, yeah.
I think for expanding the program, I would also add that transportation is potentially a component. So Kellogg students were able to walk to this job site, but other schools don't have that location. So I know our buses are really busy between 3:00 and 3:15 PM, but that's when this would happen, they would go to the job site.
Well, thinking about that, I have, my youngest daughter lives by John Adams, so as I was driving by John, John Adams, I said, oh, we could build one right there. You know, in Dakota, you know, I think the, we could solve that challenge by doing it on-site, but then, you know, it's, it's just trying to find the four Jays, because he doesn't grow on trees, unfortunately. But it's trying to find four of those people to manage the job site is, is the challenge. But I, I think we could, we could do the program without involving that, that transportation by doing the construction on-site, and then also drives a conversation with the other students at those schools, what's going on over there? How do I get to do that, kind of thing, so?
I think it would be interesting to have a, a contest between the schools as far as, you know, there's a contest within the school on the design, they had three designs, and the school voted on the winning design. It would be fun to have a competition between the schools if we were to expand it to that point. I think that would really bring some, some keen interest into the program.
We just set the agenda for our next meeting.
Well, thank you again for your partnership, and thank you to our, our RPS staff, because this is also extra commitment from, from both of you and from the other, the staff at Kellogg and community ed staff. So I look forward to seeing where this goes in the future. Thanks.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Our next agenda item is 5.2, Amanda Cowes National Federation of State High School Associations' Outstanding Music Educator Award. This is an information item. Would Ms. Cowes please come join us at the podium?
Just hearing about deeper learning and opportunities for that, and I think that's a great segue into some of the opportunities that students have K through 12, but especially in high school, for deeper learning through the arts. And in particular, I would like to congratulate you on your award. So Ms. Amanda Cowes is a dedicated educator who has served as the Director of Bands at Century High School since 2012. In addition to serving as Century High School Music Department Chair, she directs six different band ensembles and the Pitt Band Orchestra for Century musical productions. She previously directed bands at Willow Creek and Kellogg Middle Schools here in Rochester. Ms. Cowes was selected as the Section 5 recipient of the Outstanding Music Educator Award, presented by the National Federation of State High School Associations. Section 5 includes Minnesota, North Dakota, South Dakota, Nebraska, Kansas, and Missouri. This past fall, she was also selected for the Minnesota Outstanding Music Educator Award, a recognition that is also presented by the National Federation of State High School Associations. In addition to serving as a music adjudicator and clinician for large group contests and honor bands in Minnesota and Iowa, she is a key leader for the Minnesota Music Educators Associations, and serves on the National Federation of State High School Associations' Board of Directors, representing the six states in Section 5 as well as Section 8. Ms. Cowes is the only active educator to ever serve on this national Board of Directors. She is a current member of the Minnesota State High School League Music Advisory and has served on the Board of Educators, I'm sorry, on the Board of Directors of that organization, representing the M... representing the MEA. As an accomplished musician and performer, Ms. Cowes is a model for her students to aspire to. She plays horn, French horn, with the brass quintet, brass, et cetera, the Winona Municipal Band, as well as other freelance gigs. She also accompanies students for solos at contests on piano. Please join me in congratulating Amanda Cowes for this very well-deserved award and recognition.
I have to say something to Ms. Cowes. In the award announcement, Ms. Cowes was quoted as saying, "It is rewarding to build relationships with students and be part of their growth as a musician and a young adult." And from my personal experience as the parent of two Century Band alumni, I can absolutely testify that not only did you make them better musicians, but you made them better people. They've taken their love of music after graduation into their lives, both, you know, while they were at college and they're still doing it even after graduation. And I've seen you do it with so many countless students. The enthusiasm in the band room on marching band nights, the seriousness in which the students took very complicated pieces and just wowed us during concerts. And I appreciate that you take your talents, not just to Century, but you've taken it across the state, now across multiple states. You really are an exemplary example of an educator. We appreciate all you have done and thank you very much.
Item 5.3 is MSBA recognitions. Members of the Rochester School Board will be attending the MSBA Leadership Conference later this week in Minneapolis. And at the recognition luncheon on Thursday, Board Member Karen McLaughlin will be receiving two recognitions. The Leadership Development Certificate for completing the MSBA Leadership Workshop Series, Phases 1 through 4, and the Director's Award for completing 100 or more hours of attendance at the MSBA-sponsored meetings and activities. We all know the commitment it takes to fit these additional trainings and workshops into your busy schedule, and we appreciate your commitment to ongoing learning and collaboration and service to this district. And here are your awards.
Thank you very much. I was sort of expecting the one of the completing the curriculum, but I did not know about this other one, so thank you.
Item 5.4 is Board Member Committee Updates. Does any board member have updates from their committees since the last meeting or other community items to share? Director Marvin.
From Student School Board, do we have a Century High School student here? Could you come up here, please? And while Cameron couldn't make it, but thank you for showing up for Century. And while you were taking a seat in front of microphone, I'd like to talk about one other event that I was able to attend. Three of Rochester's teachers, Mrs. Dans from Churchill Elementary School and Ms. Pearlcott and, what's the other name? Quam, thank you. Thank you, right. Who are creative writing and graphics designs teachers, had their students working together. The Century students went over to Churchill, where each kindergartner had created a monster, a picture of a creature. And the kindergartners told their stories to the high school kids. High school kids asked some good questions about the creature and together they created a storyline with this creature as the main character. Then the high school kids wrote it up, created a book for each child, and a member of the graphics art class then took the creature, animated it, and made a 30-second video of that kindergarten student's creature. They presented it then at Century High School in the auditorium, big screen. So there's the kindergarten kid listening to his book get read to, well, it wasn't exactly a packed audience, but there were a lot of people there. And then to see his creature animated on the screen. I'm not sure who was more pleased, the high school students or the kindergarteners, but it was an amazing experience for all of them. It was a delight to be in the audience. And I think it's another example of how our staff goes above and beyond. And they really embrace this deeper learning because beyond just experience with storytelling, picture drawing, and animation, we had high school kids and kindergarten kids communicating together, working together, learning from each other. It was amazing. Now, thank you for being here from the Student School Board. And I understand you have a report from Century.
I do. My name's Morgan Mori. Thank you for having me tonight. I'm a senior at Century and I'm also the student body president for our student government. I'm also a graphic design student and I was there. My bird was called Mikey by my student. I'm here to provide some updates from Century Student School Board and our student government. Cameron Stout, another senior at Century, was going to be here tonight, but he's unable. Cameron is the president of Century Student School Board, a student-led organization which meets with district and building administrators to voice student opinions. He wanted me to tell the board that at the last Student School Board meeting, which was held in this room with students from across the district, Dr. Pakel attended to talk with students about the generous grant from Mayo Clinic. He answered student questions and listened to their perspectives, which was greatly appreciated by the attending students, who are also happy to hear that the new start times will be put in place next year. The district's support of student voices through Student School Board is greatly appreciated by the student population, many of whom look forward to the next meeting. As for student government, in December, we fundraised for Bear Creek Services and Paws and Claws. We proudly set our school record with $35,375. And this year, we had the greatest amount of club and class participation. In total, clubs and teachers brought in over $10,000. At the beginning of the school year, student government organized a club leadership group called the Roundabout in honor of the Roundabout built at Century, though we are productive despite the name. This group of wanted-to representatives from student life clubs like the Muslim Student Association, the Black Student Union, our Environmental Club, and the Gender and Sexuality Alliance meet monthly with Principal Schwartz to discuss how we can collaborate and what we've seen going on at Century. Outside of our fundraising, student government has four committees. The first being Equity and Inclusion, which earlier hosted, earlier in the year, hosted a Unified Kickball Day. Spirit, which organizes student activities. Community Service, which plans outreach events. And Communication, which keeps our student body informed. Another new way of information at Century is the Panther Podcast, a podcast for students by students. Thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you so much.
Any other reports from committees?
That's a hard act to follow.
That is a hard act to follow. Item 5.5 is an announcement about our comments to the board procedures. So our procedure 2068A states that individuals who want to provide comments to the board at a regular meeting must submit a written request to speak via email to the Assistant School Board Clerk by 5 o'clock on the day before the meeting. And it also details the content of that written request. To streamline and standardize that process, beginning with comments to the board for the January 23rd School Board meeting, written requests to speak during comments to the board will be submitted to the Assistant School Board Clerk using an online form. The comments to the form, comments to the board form link is available in this agenda item. And the link to the form is also available on the district website under School Board, School Board Communications. Our next items are 6.1 through 6.15, our consent agenda. Would any board member like any item removed from the consent agenda for separate consideration? Move approval.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? The consent agenda has been approved. Item 7.1 is a monitoring item. It's the report on the Superintendent Evaluation 2022-2023 Outcomes Component. The Rochester School Board approved four goals for the Superintendent Pakel on November 22nd, 2022. The evaluation of goals 2, 3, and 4 was conducted on July 18th of 2023 and reported at the School Board meeting on July 24th. The evaluation of Goal 1, Statistically Significant Improvement on Performance Indicators, was conducted at the December 12th, 2023 meeting and is being reported here. The evaluation process is described in the agenda item and I will read the board's findings. At a closed session on December 12th, 2023, the Rochester School Board met with Superintendent Dr. Kent Pakel to review progress towards the annual goals he and the school board had agreed upon. Dr. Pakel reflected on some of the district initiatives he had led during the 2022-23 school year. He extended credit to many RPS staff whose leadership and dedication had been instrumental in that work. After Dr. Pakel was excused from the meeting, board members completed the evaluation process. The tool used for Dr. Pakel's evaluation employs an innovative approach that connects the superintendent's annual goals with the district's system goals. Both are inextricably linked to the district's strategic plan. The superintendent's charge was to implement changes resulting in a statistically significant growth in three or more of the system indicators included in the RPS strategic plan. The board was unanimous in finding that RPS made statistically significant improvement in the following three goals. The number of students earning one or more post-secondary credits before high school graduation is reported in the student information system. The number of students overall and in demographic subgroups graduating in four years. And the percentage of administrators who identify as Black, Indigenous, or people of color. In addition, the board found that the superintendent has continued to demonstrate exemplary vision and leadership in a number of other areas, including making difficult but necessary budget decisions that have resulted in clean audits and significant movement toward a structured budget. Preparing for a referendum campaign that involved numerous informational sessions with community groups. Leading the district and working with staff through an unprecedented cyber attack. Fulfilling the June 2023 School Board charge to develop a proposal that would provide academically appropriate start and end times for the district's elementary and secondary students and would create efficiencies in the current transportation system. Creating a robust plan for eliciting community feedback to the proposal and ensuring the feedback is respected. Inviting sites to be transparent as they report both their progress as well as acknowledging areas that need improvement. And continuing to insist on decision-making that is collaborative, data-driven, and student-focused. The Rochester School Board is deeply grateful to Superintendent Pakel for his unflagging work ethic, his profound belief in the power of quality education, and his commitment to the students, families, and staff of Rochester Public Schools. Item 8.1, 8.1 is a prep-for-action item, the Attendance Options Redesign. Superintendent Pakel.
Thank you, Chair Nathan, and thank you, Ms. Sam. We can hopefully, if technology is happening like we want, direct your attention up to the screen for some bullet points that will frame an overview that I'm going to give of what we're calling Version 2 of the Attendance Options Redesign Proposal. A number of stakeholders across the community have already heard about this proposal because we shared it on the day of the exciting announcement of a major investment from Mayo Clinic in our work, which we are going to formally accept shortly. But we have not yet introduced it at a formal board meeting. And so this is the opportunity to update the proposal that I presented in November, which features significant changes from the first version. And as I'll outline at the end of this presentation, we are not done yet. We have two important upcoming meetings when this Version 2 will be subjected to discussion and dialogue and potentially revision in some of my recommendations and ultimately, of course, the school board's decision scheduled for January 23rd on final implementation of this very important, but also, we know, comprehensive plan. I wanted to start out with something that actually undergirds this plan because as we even heard during public comment tonight, many folks have suggested correctly that whenever you make decisions as important as the ones that are before this board this month, you have to think about the options that families will have before them and the decisions that they will make. And there has been some discussion as we have looked at enrollment decline in RPS of the degree to which families are choosing options other than Rochester Public Schools. And so one of the things that I wanted to do as we enter the home stretch of considering the Attendance Option Redesign is actually make sure that we are aware of what really is happening when it comes to decision-making about which schools have the honor of serving the children of Rochester. And so we pulled together numbers. And what we found for the preceding school year, the most recent for which data is available, was that we are privileged to serve 77% of the students, school-age students who live within the 218 square mile boundaries of Rochester Public Schools. 10% go to private schools, 7% go to other school districts, most near to us, like Pine Island or Byron, but also some through virtual technology to Bloomington or other areas of the state. 3% of the students in our school districts' territories enroll in charter schools and 3% enroll in homeschool. So I found those numbers important and interesting. But what I wanted to do, and Chief Administrative Officer John Carlson helped pull this data together, is put that in a bit of historical context. And so here's what happened when you actually looked at those numbers from 2016, 2017. Not right before the pandemic, a couple of years before. So we can say it was very much before anybody knew that that world-changing event was going to happen. Well, at that time, we served 78% of the students in the area, essentially flat. Private schools served 11%, other districts served 5%, charter schools served 3%, homeschools served 3%. What this means, board, is there is not an exodus from Rochester Public Schools in this community. There is aggregate declining number of school-aged children in the community which has resulted in a decline in student enrollment. It is not Rochester Public Schools losing, as they'd say in the business world, market share over the last several years. Now, we can never take that for granted. And as central in our strategic plan, we always need to do everything we can to be the educational option of choice for Rochester families. There was a corporate leader in the 1980s who kind of got famous and wrote a book, Only the Paranoids Survive, about worrying always what could go wrong. I do believe when it comes to family decisions and enrollment, that's true. We always need to be asking, what do families want? How do we meet those needs? But as Dr. Marvin shared earlier in talking about the board's ethics strategies, that means this board thinking about the needs of the families in the district as a whole, which may not always align with the needs of every individual family. And therein lies the hard decision-making before us. So I think some interesting context to keep in mind as we sometimes hear about a quote-unquote exodus from Rochester Public Schools. Short answer, it's not happening. Let's stop saying it. So going back to this redesign, which is an important component of the purposes of the redesign that is before us. First of all, reducing a budget deficit that we knew with the narrow failure of the referendum by 318 votes would need to be closed. As board members are aware, we actually have a deficit that is larger for next year as we are taking over the increases in employee healthcare premiums. And there will be some additional reductions. But that was a critical driver of Version 1 in the Attendance Options Redesign. And then second, as we also have heard about tonight, improving our school starting and ending times. Critically, moving our elementary school times later without moving high school and middle school students to the crack of dawn. We got a ton of feedback on Version 1 of the redesign. And I want to thank everybody for the feedback that they gave. That happened in multiple ways, through an online feedback forum that was translated into multiple languages, through information sessions via Zoom and in-person. We had a much-used email box for redesign information. School board members got and carefully cataloged the feedback that all of you received. We spent time with the staff and parents at all of the schools that would have been most affected by the Version 1 of the redesign. Very important to remember, if you read the summary of the feedback that is included with this agenda item, we did not ask the people who were providing that feedback to tell us how else they would get to those two goals I showed on the last slide of reducing the budget deficit and changing the start time. That's what we're here for. We asked what they were concerned about, what was a priority for them. And we heard about the passionate commitment that families and staff and some students have to schools in our district. It's important, as you read the feedback, which Dr. Peter Ruck put together in a summary of literally thousands of comments, that those people were not forced to make a choice and say, if this wasn't done, what would your alternative scenario be? And that's important to keep in mind as you read the feedback because to object to something without needing to identify an alternative is a different exercise from the one that faces this board in a couple of weeks, which is making decisions within those parameters. And as board members are very well aware, along the way, an extraordinary thing happened. And that was an investment of $10 million in the academic momentum of the strategic plan for Rochester Public Schools. plan for Rochester Public Schools. It's important for people to know that that investment was not finalized until days before it was announced. And that was because we were in dialogue with senior leadership at Mayo Clinic about our academic strategy and about the financial decisions that this board has made over the last several years. They wanted to be very clear that an investment at that level was not being given to a school district that had failed to make hard choices, it was being invested in one that had made hard choices and had cut over $21 million over the preceding two years. They also were announcing major giving to other causes here in Rochester as well as in Jacksonville and Phoenix. And so candidly, we went forward with the public input sessions and with the feedback, obviously hoping and knowing that some support from the clinic might be possible, but until a couple of days before, we were not in a position to be sure that was the case. And as I know, our chair will make clear when we, the board considers accepting that investment, this is an extraordinary opportunity for the school district. It's a bridge, and I will be, as I've said before, recommending to this school board that we go back to the citizens of Rochester to pass a referendum in 2024. If that doesn't happen, we will be back in many ways where we were before version one of this proposal was presented. But I'm confident, I think one of the commenters at public comment tonight said it very well, there is a new energy, an energy that can be challenging at times, but I welcome that. A new energy about supporting this agenda to make Rochester Public Schools all that it can be. So what were the big changes from version one to version two? First of all, there was an initial recommendation to close Pinewood Elementary, Mighty Oaks Early Learning School, and Riverside Elementary. That is not, no longer in version two. Version two does not make major changes in the attendance boundaries with a few exceptions that I'll touch on in a second. Version two does not assign attendance areas to district-wide option schools, or as we often call them DWOs, and provide those schools with the same level of transportation as neighborhood schools, as was the case with version one. Version two does not recommend that the 4515 balanced calendar at Longfellow Elementary be discontinued. Few more changes, it does not recommend moving Lincoln K-8 into the building occupied by Riverside. Does not recommend reconfiguring Churchill and Hoover Schools to be a separate early childhood facility and a separate K-35 elementary school. And it does recommend bringing together our Spanish immersion programs currently located at Gage and Willow Creek into a single K-8 Spanish immersion program that would operate at Riverside. So those are the big changes. The agenda item that is in the board software system tonight, in the prep-for-action category, spells version two out in the form of a recommendation that recommends the steps forward that you will have before you at the study session next week and then on the 23rd. To try and make things a bit simpler, because I know this is a complex proposal, I thought I would simply touch on the what and the why of each of the main components of version two of this attendance options redesign. And I tried to keep it as succinct and focused as I could because I know we've issued a lot of words and a lot of documents over the last couple of months. So what's the proposal for moving Pinewood Elementary into Longfellow? It would be to operate two schools within the same building, one of which would operate on that calendar where students go to school for 45 days and then they're off for 15, and one on the traditional calendar. So what are the main reasons that I'm recommending that step? First, we have an extraordinary space for learning in Longfellow Elementary. It is underutilized significantly, and that is an investment the community has made, and it is an amazing facility. This, moving Pinewood into that facility would allow us to fully utilize that amazing new space while still fully preserving Pinewood as a separate school with its current staff, its current curriculum, and its current calendar. This would provide families, though, who live in the Longfellow attendance area with a traditional calendar. And as board members are well aware, because we have not had that option for those families, we have bussed 100, this year, 120 students to Franklin Elementary in order to give them that calendar. This would make that available within the Longfellow attendance area. And then, whoops, I went one step too fast. One point that has come up in the feedback we received on version two, which we continue to listen to very intently, if a family who lives in the Longfellow attendance area and their student is now being bussed to Franklin, wants to continue at Franklin and can provide their own transportation, would they be able to do so? And the answer is yes. And we'll put that, integrate that into our feedback. I was reviewing some of the parent feedback today, and there were long, the parents who live in the Longfellow attendance area whose kids go to Franklin said, I'd like to have my kid continue, my student continue at Franklin, can they do that? And as we've tried to do with every change in this proposal, if the family can provide that transportation, we would make that option available for those families. So that's Pinewood into Longfellow. The next shift that is in the proposal would be to move our two sites with Spanish immersion into the Riverside building. That is, that building is currently occupied by Riverside Elementary. Why? Best practice in immersion education where kids are learning in the world language is to have an articulated K-8 program. And this would make that possible rather than programs in two actually geographically pretty distant sites. One thing that we heard from many of the parents at Spanish immersion is that a program located in the center of the city would be beneficial to them in terms of transportation and proximity from, not of course all, but many of their residences. And Riverside is actually currently, has about half the student enrollment that it had at its peak, and this would allow us to fully utilize that Riverside building. Some have asked about making Riverside a K-8 to parallel the Spanish immersion K-8. I will say, I think there's a lot of merit in that. Unfortunately, in our current projections, we would not be able to fit a full Riverside K-8 program in the building with a full K-8 Spanish immersion program. So the recommendation at present is that Riverside would go K through five, as it does currently, and the Spanish immersion program would articulate up to, through eighth grade. Next is moving our Mighty Oaks Early Learning School into the building that's currently occupied by Pinewood Elementary. And the core rationale for that is that while we know it's under four miles in distance, you leave the city. And we know for many of the families who we want to offer early childhood programming to and who research says would benefit from early childhood programming, that distance has been a major impediment to fully utilizing the Mighty Oaks Early Learning Facility. And so while we know it is not a long geographic distance, if you drive out to Mighty Oaks, you quickly leave the city and you are in the middle of agricultural land as you are heading out there. And we have a lot of reason to believe, as with all of this, there's never a guarantee, families make the choices, that that movement into the contiguous areas of Rochester would help us to more fully utilize the great programming that we have available. That entire staff and team would continue together. It also is a somewhat larger facility, and so we would be able to serve more students with early childhood programming as they get into, if they move into that Pinewood building. And then it would make it possible for students who are in the, well, one of the questions that we've also gotten is why not move Mighty Oaks into Longfellow? The recommendation is to move the Pinewood School into Longfellow. The core reason for that is that moving Mighty Oaks into the Longfellow building would not make it possible for families in the Longfellow attendance area to have a traditional calendar, thereby requiring us to continue busing families to either Franklin or another school on that traditional calendar. Another major change in the proposal is that there is quite limited change in the attendance areas that are being proposed as opposed to the extensive changes that were included in version one. Those changes are that a neighborhood where students pre our last boundary changes used to walk to John Adams but that have been recently been bussed out to Dakota would return to the John Adams Walk Zone. Neighborhood where students used to walk to Mayo but have been now been bussed to Century will return to Mayo. Many of those students have been getting themselves to Mayo anyway, I'm told. And then two other changes that really have to do with expected future growth in Rochester. There's a neighborhood and a developing area west of Hy-Vee on West Circle Drive that currently is shared by Sunset Terrace and Gibbs that would now be assigned to Sunset Terrace Elementary. We think that's going to work well with projections for future growth and development. And then Gage and Sunset Terrace Elementary do have extra capacity, and I've gotten some emails about that. And what's the rationale? We expect that part of the city to have significant growth in the years ahead, and having that resource and that space at Sunset Terrace and Gage, we think will be very valuable. There is no plan, and I've gotten a couple of emails about this, to close or phase out Gage or Sunset Terrace. We expect growth and that having the space in those schools for that growth would be advantageous moving forward. So the core rationale there is maximizing the efficient use of space and reducing some of our transportation costs, like the students who used to walk to John Adams getting bussed out to Dakota. Another major component of version two of the proposal is creating what we're calling a regional transportation system for our district-wide option schools. The core idea there is that you would have somewhat larger catchment areas than a neighborhood school's attendance area within which students would receive transportation or would be able to walk to a district-wide option school. The regions, as we're calling them, were, are essentially clusters of adjacent elementary school attendance areas that are geographically near each district-wide option school. And the elementary schools in that region can serve as transfer points for students who might be dropped off at that elementary school and then get a bus to the district-wide option school if that's more convenient for the family than driving them all the way to the district-wide option school. When we actually looked at it, approximately two-thirds of all current students live in a region that has a district-wide option school. Now, many of those students who are in those district-wide option schools currently live all over the city. It would mean over time, each, two-thirds of the students would have a neighborhood school in their attendance area and would live in the region of a district-wide option school. And were this structure to be approved and were we to stick with it, the addition of additional district-wide option schools in the future might make it possible to say everyone has access to a district-wide option school and an attendance area school at the elementary and middle school levels, should we choose to head in that direction. But that would be happening over time. So why? What's the core rationale for this regional transportation structure? The regions do not stretch across the full school district, and as this board knows well, the biggest impediment to moving to our new start times are the long transportation routes that students who attend the current district-wide option schools with our current transportation services take. And it simply is not possible to turn the buses around quickly enough when you have routes that are that long to implement the new start times that the board has already approved for next year. And so that's the core rationale for that change. I've also proposed that we institute a self-transport option, and the proposal is to do that at the elementary, middle, and high school levels, but I'll touch on some recent feedback about the high school level in a second. This, we haven't talked quite as much about the fact that this would essentially expand something that's happening already. Rochester has what's called an exception-to-attendance process through which a family can identify one of a number of accepted reasons for seeking to go to a school outside your attendance area. And that is managed by our Office of School Support and frankly is utilized fairly widely. It is however not well-known and is utilized by families who either are guided to or told that it exists. This option would essentially say that if there is space in a school that is not fully filled by students who live in its attendance area, and the family can transport either through walking or by driving to that school, students would be able to attend other schools in the district. So what's the core rationale? Well, part of it is to make broadly available what families who have utilized the exception-to-attendance option have been utilizing for many years, and that works quite well for those families. In the years immediately ahead, as we would expect, some families who have been seeing their students bussed on those long bus rides to district-wide option schools, this provision would expand the number of schools that those families could choose from should they decide they're not able to or they choose not to continue to drive their kids to the district-wide option school. A point that has been made by many people who've commented on version two of this redesign is that were to the board to approve this self-transport option, we would very, need to very carefully monitor the impact it would have on the enrollment numbers, the aggregate numbers of kids in certain schools. Would certain schools become oversubscribed and would certain schools become undersubscribed? And we would also need to carefully monitor the impact it might have on the demographic mix in certain schools. But those would be things, in my view, the board could, administration could monitor on an ongoing basis within some criteria that we want to be observant of. The point about high schools that has been made, it really has come from, in fact, our colleagues in Rochester Education Association raised in a meeting yesterday. Dr. Marvin, you've raised this point, a number of other folks have as well. High schools are somewhat different. They're different, of course, because of sports and abiding by state high school league rules. What I've proposed would be allowable, but is it conceivable that you might see a concentration of families that are particularly vested in one sport wanting to send their kid to that particular high school? It's certainly possible. Also, our high schools, John Marshall, Century, and Mayo, have got very deep connections to certain geographic communities. And so I have heard that concern about the high school piece. It is still included in the recommendation that is in the prep-for-action category, but I'm quite confident that we'll have a, this will be among the subjects for discussion next week at the study session. And I understand the concerns about adding the self-transport option at the high school level. One option, and I don't mean to presuppose a change in the recommendation, could be to take time to study that option at the high school level or potentially at the elementary and middle school level as well. But again, something that, a point that I haven't made as, I think publicly as I am now, this is making available to all families what families who've utilized the exception-to-attendance provision have been doing for many years. So the next component is expanding our Montessori school within Franklin. The reason there would be that space is because there are 120 students that are currently being bussed to the Franklin building because the Longfellow balanced calendar is in their attendance area, and they've said we, that doesn't work for our family. We save money on transportation costs by discontinuing busing those students, but we have a waiting list in the Montessori program. And Montessori is a great model for many students, and this would allow us to incrementally expand the Montessori program that exists within our Franklin building. Next provision of the proposal is to geographically expand our newcomers program for family, for students who are new to the country and new to learning the English language. And so at present, those students are bussed across the entire community to three schools. In this instance, that would be offered at two elementary schools, Gage and Franklin, two middle schools, Kellogg and Willow Creek, and then all of the high schools. And so the rationale for that is that we're reducing the need for students to travel across the full district to get to the programming and receive intensive support, and also it saves money on transportation. Expanding school-age childcare, which we heard about also in public comment tonight, is another component of the proposal. We think that pending securing enough workers who can actually watch the kids and work with the kids in our SAC program, that we can manage a 25% increase next year. That would eliminate the waiting list that was talked about earlier and actually add numerous spaces beyond that. I think going beyond that initial 25% in subsequent years would also be a good idea for reasons that were also discussed tonight. Childcare is going to be an urgent need in this community, but we also know we have to have the right people who are running those programs. And so we're taking some innovative steps, and I'm excited to say that the response from our high school students to a new opportunity to earn credit and learn about youth development in, by working in SAC has been very strong out of the gate. So we're really excited about that. And so that is a way to help begin to meet the need that, that is much on people's minds these days. Creating a middle school area learning center, excuse me, is, I believe, the last provision in the version two of the proposal I want to touch on. This has not changed significantly since version one. We have an amazing alternative learning center in our high school, for our high school students in Rochester that has a waiting list, that has a strong school culture, that is a, has a innovative educational model, and we don't have that in our, for our middle school students. And so this proposal would create an area learning center. There is a state funding stream, there are state criteria for who can be served in an area learning center there. And you see on the slide several key components of what I think would be a very exciting design process that builds on work that's been done, centered on our staff that currently works in our Right Fit program, but there have been many others that have been involved in the visioning for this new programming. You can see the criteria for the students who would be served by that middle school ALC. They're substantially below grade level, they've experienced physical or emotional abuse, they're struggling with mental health concerns, they're homeless or have recently been homeless, or they just withdrawn from school or chronically absent. And you can see an educational vision there of project-based learning, deeper learning, capstone project at the end of their middle school years related to the city of Rochester, the chance to take classes through which they can the chance to take classes through which they can explore their personal interests, a strong emphasis on social-emotional learning, and planning for post-secondary education and a career at the end of high school. We would anticipate that at its peak, 90 students might be served by a middle school area learning center and that we would expand that number gradually over time to be sure that we were designing high-quality programming for those students. So, what's next in this continuing proposal? As I've said a couple of times tonight, we are in the home stretch. We're introducing the version two, the revised version, in the Prep for Action category of your agenda tonight. We will have a study session next week through which you will, I'm sure, have questions and dialogue about the provisions in version two. We will also summarize the feedback that we have gotten on version two for you as we have done with tonight's agenda on version one. It's nowhere near as voluminous as version one, but we have gotten some good feedback that we are spending time with and that we'll summarize for the board and the community. And then, at the regular meeting on the 23rd, you are scheduled to receive a final version of this redesign proposal, which may include some changes in what I've just described tonight. And you are scheduled to vote. As board members are well aware, there is a clock ticking in the sense that families are waiting to know about kindergarten enrollments. Our transportation staff is eager to begin completely redesigning the transportation route structure to make the new start times possible next fall. And so, we do need to have a decision made on key components of this proposal. Some could be tabled for further consideration and others are very time-sensitive. I am choosing to recommend it as a package because I think when taken together, there's a coherence that runs across these various pieces of the strategy. And we will begin literally on the 24th, moving into implementation mode based on the final decisions that you make at that time. So, that is our overview of version two. And as we outlined at the beginning, it's quite a bit different from version one. Yes, that difference is deeply related to Mayo Clinic's extraordinary support for our students, which all of us should feel very good about and proud of, but it's not only Mayo Clinic's investment, it is also the feedback that we received about everything from building capacity to program characteristics to the impact of a second wave of boundary changes only a few years after boundary changes were previously made here in Rochester. So, we did listen, we'll continue to listen. That said, as I began this overview with, we do face the two realities of a significant budget deficit and the need to change our transportation system to make the new start times possible. And so, our creativity, such as it may be, needs to be bounded by those two realities going forward. And so, with that, Madam Chair, that is our updated attendance options redesign.
Thank you. So, board members, as is our usual procedure for study sessions, you will have the opportunity to pose questions ahead of the meeting to give the superintendent and cabinet administration the opportunity to maybe do some research. And that'll be our usual Q and A document. But of course, you will be welcome to bring your, your questions and observations to the study session on Tuesday. Appreciate the fact that you've let us know that you're going to summarize the feedback we're getting. Should you be, the form is closed, right?
Yeah.
For the feedback form?
Yeah, we have to, we have to start analyzing.
Right. So, board members, however, are continuing to get emails and we will continue to summarize them in our centralized Google Doc that we've been using so that you'll have access to that as well.
Yep. That's been very helpful.
Any other questions or comments about what's next, board members? Dr. Marvin?
There's been a lot of talk about conversation, communication during this meeting, and I just want to say again how much I appreciate the work of Ms. Sam and Ms. Nathan and Ms. Workman and Dr. Pecal that you have done in ensuring that every voice, every email, every phone call has been documented and that we all then get that information. It's, it's been an enormous amount of communication. We appreciate it. And as, as you said, Dr. Pecal, we take it seriously. So, thank you.
All right. Dr. Farley?
Unrelated to the last item, I was going to say at this time, can we take our research?
You've just read my mind. Board members, let's take a 10-minute recess, we'll return at 7:32.
You're the cutest grandma.
Actually, my grandma's the cutest grandma, so.
Oh, that's good.
You're very pretty.
No, that's what.
You voted on, you voted to be a junior candidate?
Thing to say, and that's the thing, she is the cutest grandma.
My.
I've never met her, but I'm sure she is.
She is. You know, all those shirts that say.
But she's not a sarcastic.
You gotta go back and review that.
Yeah.
Those little ones aren't even for her.
I'll never get that.
And no, she's not sarcastic, she's just like.
Board is back in session at seven thirty-two P M. The next item on the agenda is an action item nine point one, acceptance of Mayo Clinic donation. Before I introduce the resolution, I'm just gonna give a little background on what the recommendation is that's been brought to us about how we will accept and process this donation. On December twentieth, twenty twenty-three, the Mayo Clinic announced a gift of ten million dollars to Rochester Public Schools to enable the school district to sustain the implementation of the district's strategic plan for academic transformation. These funds are intended to be included in the district's twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five general fund revenue budget in lieu of making budget reductions of a similar amount. Upon formal acceptance of the donation by the school board tonight, the finance staff will include this donation as part of the original budget that will be submitted for school board approval at the scheduled meeting on June eighteenth of twenty twenty-four. So the resolution be resolved that the School Board of Independent School District five thirty-five does hereby accept an unrestricted donation from Mayo Clinic in the amount of ten million to sustain the implementation of the district's strategic plan for academic transformation. Yet further resolved that the School Board of Independent School District five thirty-five does hereby direct the finance staff to defer the revenue from the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four general fund revenue budget for inclusion into the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five general fund revenue budget.
Move approval.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. Are there any other questions or discussion? I think it's appropriate to say before, as we're on the verge of approving this, how grateful we are to Mayo Clinic for this donation. And as I was reflecting a little bit on this tonight, I went back to verify whether I had remembered correctly that Dr. William Worrell Mayo and Dr. Charlie Mayo had both served on the Rochester School Board. And they were pioneers in establishing the Rochester School District that we are today. So to me, this is just an extension of that legacy, not only of the Mayo name, but of Mayo's commitment to supporting education in our community. And we will, we will be grateful for that as we move forward with our strategic plan and our, and our plans to support our students' success. So all those in favor of the resolution say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The resolution has been approved.
I wasn't sure how I was gonna vote on that.
We didn't waste any time saying aye.
Item nine point two, School Board Handbook. This is also an action item, but before I introduce the resolution, some background. The School Board approved the School Board Handbook on January third, twenty twenty-three. The handbook describes the school board's roles and responsibilities and includes our board's procedures and protocols. The board is also committed to an annual review of the handbook. The handbook has been updated for twenty twenty-four to include updated links that changed because of the conversion to the new district website and to Symbli and updated data points for the district for the twenty twenty-three, twenty-four school year. Before I read the resolution, are there any other updates that anyone would like to suggest to the handbook? Director Cook.
I, I would like to suggest that the handbook be included in the section of the school district website about school board elections. I think it has a lot of pertinent information for anyone in our community that might be considering joining the school board. And while it's available in Symbli and other places, I think that would be a really great place to include a link.
Great, thank you. Anything else? All right. Be it resolved that the School Board of I S D five thirty-five approve the School Board Handbook for twenty twenty-four and schedule an annual review of the handbook for December twenty twenty-four for approval at the first meeting in January twenty twenty-five.
Move approval.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. All those in favor of the resolution say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The resolution has been approved. Next item on the agenda is a discussion of the school board budget and member compensation. The budget for what is reflected in our Skyward Software as the School Board Department was set at two hundred and fifty-six thousand eighteen dollars for the twenty twenty-three, twenty-four school year. The purpose of this agenda item is to allow the board to review and discuss the components of the school board budget and approve a proposed budget or parameters for that budget for the fiscal year twenty-five's year, taking into account the deficit and budget reductions that may be necessary for twenty twenty-four, twenty-five. The agenda item goes into more detail, but at a high level, thirty-one point seven percent of the budget is expenditures for personnel, taxes, services, or supplies, materials that support the work of the school board. And the school board has the most discretion to set budgets for the other sixty-eight point three percent of the budget, which includes school board compensation, travel and conferences, and dues, membership, and licenses. So the recommendation that we brought forward is that we carry forward with the expenses with any necessary increases for inflation or other cost increases in the categories that total about eighty-one thousand seven hundred and forty-three. And that's the expenditures for the Assistant School Board Clerk, related payroll and worker compensation costs, contributions to the Public Employees Retirement Association, contracted services, including to livestream these meetings, and for our contractors, should we choose to do an M S B A self-evaluation, legal services specifically related to school board meetings and policies, publishing our legal notices in the Post Bulletin, supplies and materials, district-issued computers or tablets for board members, and meals and beverages for school board retreats or meetings. And the second recommendation is what I hope we'll focus on in our discussion, is to review the previous budgets in the areas of school board compensation, travel and conferences, dues, memberships, and licenses. So any discussion on those recommendations, direction, observations from reviewing the budget? Director Workman.
Yeah, I have a, a question for, for Dr. Pickell. Will some of these areas, will you be addressing them as you do your financial restructuring? Because I'm seeing some of the dues, memberships, and licenses, and I'm kind of scratching my head as to why they're included in our budget. So we'll wait to hear from you on that.
Yeah, I think, Director Workman, this is actually a relatively small, in terms of the amount of money, but very good example of one goal we need to achieve through our funding redesign, which the board will be working on this summer and next fall. And that is to make sure that the flows of funds make sense. And there are things in the school board budget that really are not school board functions. I don't know why they're there, but we need to put them where they make sense, and those resources can be managed. Now, nothing's being mismanaged here, but we need to make sure that each part of the school district at both the school and the district levels is funded with very clear funding sources, the purpose for which is very clear, and that we have budget managers who manage those funds efficiently and effectively. And so, yes, I will be bringing some recommendations to you to clean this up.
Great, thank you. Director Garcia.
I just wanted to kind of bring resolution to something that I mentioned in a December meeting, so thank you, Chair Nathan. I have a little spiel. I made mention in the December meeting that I would be foregoing my salary for twenty twenty-four, which is the last year of my current term. I feel like the right, it was the right decision for me, because while our individual board members' salaries of sixteen thousand dollars is nickels and dimes when propped against a multi-million dollar budget deficit, I did not feel right as a leader to take my salary when positions were going to be cut or moved and schools were going to be closed or merged. If I could give my salary to, for example, spare, or I'm sorry, if I could forego my salary to, for example, spare an educational support professional or keep a teacher in their position a little longer, I will feel like I've done something in line with my conscience and values as a leader. We all know Mayo offered us a ten million dollar gift, and it is just that, a gift, not a long-term solution to our current budget deficit issues. So I will still forego my salary, because what I shared was not performative, and the issues that compelled me to decline my salary are still not fixed. We still need our community to stay serious about their commitment to having the best schools, which are funded to keep pace with the wonderful and innovative work we do in our district. We need all of us to show up and vote on referendums and lobby our legislators so that we may strengthen and simplify our funding system and streams, and not just when it affects you as an individual, but always when it affects any of our students. That being said, I don't want my declination of a salary to be misconstrued as agreeing that this should be a volunteer position, not for a district of our size. Being a school board member in twenty twenty-three could be a full-time job, and the persons holding our seats are deserving of a salary that reflects that. It would be more equitable, and it would increase the diversity of those who run. So I have emailed John Carlson to decline my salary and have not and will not receive payment for this year, which my colleagues can also do, should they be so moved. I do look forward to ongoing discussions of our budget plans and hope to be part of a board that will offer a district a balanced and sustainable budget. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Garcia. Does anybody else have any? Does anybody else have any comments about any of the components of the budget where we might be able to have parameters? Director Barlow.
I just wanted to reiterate that our, it was maybe a month or two ago that we received in terms of our annual audit. So even though there's some, you've been asked to maybe look at the school board budget, it's not like you've already indicated that we're in violation or that there's money being misappropriated. It's just really, and, and John, correct me, have our auditors ever suggested a need for a cleaning that up, or?
Does anybody have any thoughts on the travel and conferences component of the budget? Our past practice has been to budget for all board members to participate in, and reminding the board that we do have a board election in November. So there is the possibility of having three new board members who, in twenty twenty-five, would be required to take the Phase One workshop, but also would be available to complete Phases three through, three through four, or two through four, as well as attending the leadership conference, the A M S D annual meeting, and then the other two M S B opportunities, the Summer Leadership Seminar and Day of the Capitol. And adding that up would be a budget of ten thousand nine hundred ninety-nine dollars and forty-six, whereas this year's budget was about thirteen thousand for our travel and conferences. The other component that we can make a decision about is the National School Board Conference, which this year is COSBA. Estimating the cost to COSBA, for example, this year was about two thousand six hundred and eighty dollars. I was originally planning to attend that conference, but looking at that cost relative to the other costs of what's available here through M S B A and A M S D, I'm not going to attend that conference and keep that money in our budget for this year, should there be other conferences more local that we might want to take advantage of. But we can set a parameter for our travel and conferences based on our need or willingness to attend which conferences. Director Workman.
During the first couple of years of my tenure on the school board, we, we had an in-depth conversation about this, because at the time, it was like only two board members can go to national conference, because we, we're just not gonna pay for more we think we could do. But as the discussion ensued, and a point I'd like to make now is that this is part of our professional development. And we're making, as a team, incredible decisions for this district. And I take very seriously my responsibility to get as much professional development as I can. That said, I think there may have been one year when seven board members went to the, it was a National School Board Association Conference, and I think it was in San Diego that year. But it is expensive, and for me to be going to a national school board conference at this point, it doesn't make a whole lot of sense. Another colleague who's on the board at the time and I were planning on, we had been accepted to do a workshop at the National School Board Association Conference. That was derailed with COVID, so we never had an opportunity to do this. So at this point, I'm not sure what I get out of a national conference. I mean, it's great to meet people from all over the country, but I can do that virtually now. On the other hand, I think the Minnesota School Board Conference is, is very valuable for any number of reasons, because it is confined to the state of Minnesota. Although, you know, we feel sometimes that we don't have a whole lot in common with some of our surrounding districts, simply because of our size. It gives us an opportunity to also visit with school board members in the Twin Cities metro area, and I find that very helpful. And in addition, I think that the, the sessions that we have available to us are very pertinent to what is actually happening in the world. And as usual, as I'm going through the, the conference schedule, it's like, dang, why did they have to, to schedule this session, this session, and this session at the same time? So I'm hoping that with, you know, maybe talking to some of my fellow school board members, just to find out what they are taking, so that if there's, you know, something that I feel a real need to be at, no matter what, I would go to that. But otherwise, if another board member has it covered, you know, I'm, that, that gives us an opportunity to diversify, so I can see both sides of that coin. So I, I have a question for Chair Nathan. Is the expectation that at some point we do a brief presentation to the rest of our board members as to some of the sessions that we have attended and what we've learned that might possibly be useful, and if so, can we get that on the calendar?
I think that would be appropriate for our board committee report at our next meeting following, on the twenty-third, following M S B A this week. So board members be ready. Director Barlow.
So I'm hearing two things. One, what is budgeted, okay, which is honestly really what is spent. So I guess I'd like for a clarifying response to what exactly are you trying to get at there? You know, you identified the total amount for be it in-state or out-of-state. And yet rarely, in fact, there's the state conference, which begins tomorrow for some, and not all of board members will be attending, even though the budget is for all to attend. So I guess I'm wondering, well, what's the concern? Okay. There is that I've attended both state and national conferences, and I know I have benefited greatly from both, and will probably continue to take advantage of the opportunity to attend, for no other reason, the professional development. Director Workman is correct. During the COVID years, I believe the national providers of, were offering online options. I'm not so sure that that is an ongoing practice. And so I guess I just wanted, what's the bottom line of the point behind the discussion?
Sure. So if the board members would be comfortable, instead of having a formal action item, because we will take formal action on the budget when we vote on the budget, if we can come to some consensus of the parameters that we would give Mr. Carlson in terms of what the budget line item would look like for school board. So we talked about the expenses that support the school board that add up to the eighty-one thousand seven hundred and eighty-three. And then the school board compensation budget would be a hundred and thirty-three thousand six hundred, should we decide to stay with our sixteen thousand per board member and the sixteen hundred additional stipend for chair. With regard to travel and conferences, we could make a decision to include in a budget the around eleven thousand dollars that would fully fund all M S B A and A M S D opportunities. And we could add to the budget some sort of amount to allow one, or two, or seven school board members to attend the national conference. The total cost for all board members to attend a national conference would be fifteen thousand seven hundred and sixty-four dollars. So that would greatly increase the travel and conferences budget that is currently set. Just on a note, a number of other boards do make that decision, as opposed to saying all seven members can attend. They either, you know, set one or two, and then they would rotate from year to year, you know, with people, with board members attending, so that the dollar cost in any one year isn't too high, and we could choose to do that. If there's a number of board members who are expressing a desire to still want to have the opportunity to attend next year, because you're right, we don't know what the issues might be or what the information might be, that's something we could include in the budget. And then the third line item being the dues, membership, and licenses. If you look at what is currently covered in that category, some are obviously related to our work, such as the M S B A membership and policy services and A M S D, and some of the other categories might be moved out of our budget into another line item that the superintendent might recommend. So we could just set a parameter for that to, for example, include M S B A and A M S D with the others to be decided. Those are the three big decision areas.
So I, I guess my, my perspective would be that setting the budget parameter is going to necessarily affect the funding that's, the resources that are available for other items that would be part of the fiscal year twenty-five budget. So if we think that there are realistic areas to reduce these planned expenses, I, I think we should, yeah, we should plan on those reductions. And I, I think that planning on two members to attend a national conference is sufficient for this board and would be aligned with our, with our priorities. So that would be my suggestion, to use that as a parameter for that item. For the, the dues and memberships, I, I didn't think that there was anything that jumped out at me as an area to cut. I think the, the budgeting for the M S B A Phase One through Four workshops makes sense, especially in view of the possibility of new board members in fiscal year twenty-five. And, yeah, I, I guess that, that's the one that I would suggest would be to budget for two members to attend the national conference.
Director Garcia.
I would support that. I think, I mean, it makes sense when you have a board that is full of people who are retired, that maybe all seven would want to or be able to go, but that's not our makeup anymore. And I think it would be sufficient to have one or two people show up and present to the rest of us the information that they've learned and focusing more on the M S, you know, getting as many of us as possible to attend M S B A or, in part, or all.
Director Workman.
The other thing that I think is, is worth remembering, too, is that a lot of the materials that are shared in those workshops are available online. So it's not the same as a presentation, maybe it might even be better, but we do have access to some of that information if we choose to look at it.
Any other, someone to weigh in on that? Is everybody pretty much in consensus that that two number is good to send to national?
I think it is, and I guess the only thing I would add is I haven't been to the national, but I have been to the state, and I've been impressed by the quality of the state presentations, and that I think that we're getting great education through the M S B A for those of us who can't go to the, the national conference, that, you know, we're, we're getting quality, even here, local here in Minnesota, in addition to those, the networking opportunities with people we're probably gonna have more direct contact with if, if we need to have contact with people in other districts.
Is that a hand, Director Workman?
It's kind of a hand. I think, I think it's really important for school board members to do all four phases of the workshop. I think it's, I was looking it up here. I was pretty sure Phase One and Phase Two are both required by the state of Minnesota. So we don't have an option to not provide that, or we say to school board members, sorry, it comes out of your own pocket, which I think is not reasonable.
Great. All right. So what I'm hearing is we can let Dr. Carl, uh, Mr. Carlson know, I gave you a new job, John, to set the budget for the school board compensation at a hundred and thirty-three, a hundred and thirty-three thousand six hundred. The travel and conferences for in-state at about eleven thousand. We'll budget for two individuals to go to a national conference with an estimate of twenty-six hundred and eighty dollars each. And we'll stick with the dues, membership, and licenses that we currently have budgeted, which may change if some of those are moved out of our budget line item. Good? All right, great. Thank you, board members. All right, I'm.
Excuse me, Madam Chair, do we need to vote on that? It's an action item, is?
No, if you're all comfortable with just having a consensus item, we'll formally vote on it when we actually approve the budget.
Sounds good, thank you.
Item ten point one, Other Business, Board Questions and Responses. There were no questions submitted by board members before the meeting. Item ten point two and ten point three, I'm going to do together, the preview of the January twenty twenty-four A B C D items and the upcoming board meeting dates. So you will see in our agenda a draft of the A B C D items for the remainder of the January meetings, and this draft is already outdated, because we are. meetings, and this draft is already outdated, because we are finalizing the ABCD for the year, which you will approve at the January 23 meeting. So on January 16, at 5:30 p.m., we have a study session on the attendance options redesign and a planned brief introduction of a draft legislative priorities from our Legislative Committee. And on January 23, at 5:30 p.m., we have a regular meeting, where the major agenda items will be action on the attendance options redesign and our legislative priorities for 2024, and a presentation on the district's five-year general fund forecast. Other than that, and what you've seen on the ABCD, are there any pressing agenda items you would like to raise for consideration for our January meetings? Hearing none, we'll move on to item 10.4, Closed Session Attorney/Client Privilege and Labor Negotiations. The next items on the agenda are two closed sessions pursuant to Minnesota Statute, Section 13D.05 subdivision 3B, which allows the board to go into closed session pursuant to the attorney-client privilege and labor negotiations. The first closed session is regarding attorney-client privilege to discuss pending litigation, and the second closed session is regarding labor negotiation strategy. The first closed session will be convened immediately following passage of the motion in the Edison Building, main floor conference room, followed by the second closed session in the same location. Pursuant to the law I have cited, will someone make a motion to go into closed session?
Some move.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to glow into, to go into closed session. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The board moves into closed session at 7:58 p.m.
The board is back in session at the regular meeting at 8:00, 9:01 PM. Clark McLaughlin, will you please read the list of people present in the closed session on labor negotiations?
There was Chair Nathan, Director Garcia, Director Barlow, Mr. Bakken, Assistant School Board Clerk Ms. Sam, myself, John Carlson, Director Marvin, Director Cook, Superintendent Bacall, and Vice Chair Workman.
And hearing no other business, this meeting is adjourned at 9:02 PM.